This is Regulating of the Forest Hills Board of Education, May 21st, 2018. Dr. Ice, please call home.
Here.
Ms. Joyce?
Here.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Barbara?
Yes.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, this is a different location with us, so please do listen to the safety brief. Interactions are here, here, and elsewhere you came in. Item 2.1, you'll note our treasurer today is not here this evening, and I have motioned to appoint a treasurer pro tempus. Is there a second place?
Oh, second.
Dr. Ice? Ms. Joyce? Ms. Barbara?
Yes.
Ms. Joyce? Ms. Barbara?
Yes.
Item 5.1, motion to adopt the agenda. To move. Dr. Ice? Ms. Joyce? Ms. Barbara?
Yes.
Yes. Item...
Test, this is important. This is my call.
Item 4, 4.1 through 4.8, approval of various minutes.
Motion to approve those minutes. Dr. Ice?
Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
Ms. Barbara?
Yes.
Dr. Ice, yes, is it approved?
Yes. And item 4, 5.1 correspondence, Mr. Prepples?
Yes, sir. This was a note from Dee Stone, who is the executive director of the foundation, and she writes to us that we are excited recently to learn more about the Foundation and Forest Hill School District, for again awarding $50,000 grant to support Project Leadway in our schools. So later this summer, Duke Energy will be visiting us and providing formal documents. We're very thankful for that. We also have tomorrow, Duke Energy will be dispersing $600,000 to one of the school districts for their literacy and workforce development grants as well as STEM. So like Craig and Forest Hill's Foundation, where they continue to support our students and our Project Leadway program, and also Duke Energy, who is a great partner of the school district and has provided us many gifts to be able to enable great things to happen within our classrooms. I also received from Senator Steve Wilson to the members of the Board of Education of Forest Hills, thank you for forwarding a copy of the Forest Hills School District's Board of Education's resolution in opposition to House Bill 512, which would restrict, which would restructure Ohio's educational agencies and their duties. I always appreciate hearing from local officials within my district and listening to their thoughts on the issues that impact constituents at the local level. There's other parts to the letter, but we want to thank Steve Wilson, Senator of Ohio's 7th Senate District, for recognizing the Board of Education in our quest to continue to maintain local control of our schools and the state's schools by having an Ohio Board of Education, an elected body of Ohio Board of Education members. Those are the two correspondence items that I have. Guess we're beginning to taxi.
Thank you. Correspondence from any other board member? No? Section, or item 5.2, procedures for public commentary to be followed by public comments. This meeting is a meeting at 16. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school's district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation, which is next. During the meeting, as indicated in the agenda, under public commentary, individuals who would like to share their opinions or some comments concerning a topic on the Board's agenda should fill out a sheet upfront and have it delivered to me. This is not a meeting on any particular issue, and we have our regular business to conduct, so I'm going to limit public commentary this evening to 30 minutes. That gives us time for no more than 15 speakers, and I have 15 in front of me, so if you weren't one of the first 15, I apologize, there will not be opportunity for you to speak. To the best of my knowledge, that's only one person that we're going to have to turn down this evening. Which brings us to the next part, which is the public comments, and as I indicate, two minutes will time, we will cut you off. I apologize in advance, it's not my intention to be rude, it's instead my intention to give everybody an opportunity to speak who wants to, and limit the speaking to 30 minutes so we can conduct our business as we need to for this evening. So item 6.1, public comments, our first speaker is Brian Lindsay.
Do you know residents or non-residents?
I don't know. I've got an address here. Hold on, before you start...
A little bit echoing.
We have already allowed non-residents to speak on this issue, we've had people from out of town. For me to change that rule now doesn't seem reasonable. Yeah, testing? All right. Mr. Lindsay, you can begin.
Okay, I hope I can do this in two minutes. I'm a graduate of Anderson, 1976. I'm a proud supporter of the Redskins name. I've never spoken at public forum, so, Norm, if I have an issue, I usually call them aside if I'm at a local council meeting and express my concerns, but I thought it was important to come here tonight. Real quick, I'm a flight attendant with American Airlines, I've been flying 35 years. We have 27,000 flight attendants. Lot of religions, lot of nationalities I work with. Most recently, I've asked many crew members that are Native American and passengers, you know, how they feel about the name, and I explained to them what was going on, and never once have any of them felt the name Redskins was insensitive. They're very proud of their heritage, and I think they would be the ones to ask. I personally wouldn't associate with a name that was racist, any bigotry, or insensitive, anybody that knows me. I don't think it should be a really tough decision for all of you to make on how people Thanks for letting me talk. I had a few more other things to say, but it's going to go over two minutes, so I got to the gist of it, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
You're welcome.
Barbara York?
My name is Barbara York, and I'm a parent in this district, and I felt so privileged to attend the last school board meeting on April 23rd and hear all the awards for excellent schools, as well as the public commentary. And I was particularly interested in two people who spoke, and one was Dr. Aaron Payment of the National Council of American Indians, and the other one was Anderson citizen Mary Pember. And these two people spoke, I thought, especially beautifully to the issue of the team name and logo. It really comes down to the fact that we cannot continue to have a racial slur. We can't continue to have this as the team name of our high school, both because it is damaging to our children and puts our community in a bad light. It seems that Anderson High School doesn't actually fully even embrace the current name, as it's not on all the equipment, nor on all the uniforms. So changing the name would not only eliminate the conflicting message of having antiquated racial term at an educational institution, it would also allow Anderson students to truly enjoy the experience of having a mascot, which is something they do not have right now. This term not only damages children by limiting their education to that of stereotypes, but it also damages the self-esteem of Native American children. I think it's important that it's not just that the term is offensive, that it is damaging. If we want our community to continue to thrive, we need people to move here, buy houses, and pay the taxes that support our school system. To continue embracing this name and logo unfortunately makes our community seem unwelcoming and closed-minded, which is something that we are not. Simply put, the controversy is not going to go away, it'll only continue to distract from our fantastic schools. Anderson deserves this change, and I look forward to coming together as a community celebrating a new mascot that we can all be proud of. Thanks for listening.
Thank you to the Board for allowing us to speak. I am Anne Zimmerman, and I'm a multi-decade resident of the township, but tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Elizabeth Broder Oldak Stolenberg, who wasn't able to be here because she lives out of town, and who represents how I feel as well. I am a 2003 graduate of Anderson High School. I moved to Anderson Township in 1998 as an eighth grader. My family moved several times during my childhood, and Anderson High School was the sixth school I had attended. I was immediately welcomed by the other students in a way that I had never experienced before and treated with a lot of kindness at a time when I felt very alone and afraid. I believe that the Anderson Township community is caring, compassionate, and respectful. This is why I have always been baffled and disturbed by the Anderson High School mascot. Why would a community that cares so much about people want to keep a mascot that others have shared, that they find personally derogatory, disrespectful, and dehumanizing? I am currently a clinical social worker who specializes in children's mental health. Having the red skin as a mascot is damaging to the young people who care and education have been entrusted to the school district. Research shows us that children absorb subtle messages about race from their communities and their caregivers. Using the name Redskins for the AHS mascot sends the message that the adults in the district are not committed to equality or safety for children who are not white. It teaches children of color that their voices are not important, and that speaking up for their needs will be met with aggression and criticism from the adults who are supposed to take care of them. This isn't healthy for any of the children in the district. Changing the mascot highlights the values of kindness and compassion that I experienced as a student, values that are already a part of the community, even though this change feels... Thank you.
He will start his high school career at Anderson this fall. He's been in Forest Hills School District since he was in kindergarten and has benefited from his education academically and interpersonally. My son has been taught to be kind, to take responsibility for his actions, to treat others with respect and compassion, and to stand up for those who are being unfairly treated. Forest Hills School District has upheld these same guiding principles that have also been taught in our home and in our church. My son very much wants to enter Anderson High School this fall with a sense of school pride. Currently, he does not feel that. As it stands, my son is ashamed to wear the current spirit wear due to the logo branding that uses a word that originated as a call for genocide. He is also aware of the intimidation that occurs when students speak out against the logo. Every meeting that we attend when we come home from these meetings, he wants to know how it went. He's very concerned that he will inherit the current logo, casting a shadow of shame over his next four years. It's an intimidating position for a 14-year-old. When you know better, you do better. In order for any group or society to continue to thrive, we must evolve. We do know better. My son knows better and has the right to feel a deep sense of pride in his high school, the same pride that many in this room felt when they were students at Anderson High School. We must evolve, or we risk losing much more than a logo or a team name. We risk losing the ideals and the vision that the very students in our community that we need to lead us forward. Doing the right thing is often difficult. We need to do the right thing now.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of this, of Anderson Township for 25 years. Both my children went to schools here. I'm going to read a letter that expresses my opinion, but I feel is much more impactful than my personal opinion. This letter is from Glenna Walker, Glenna, I'm sorry, Glenna Wallace, she's chief of the Eastern Shawnee Tribe, and it is her reply to an inquiry that was received this year asking her opinion about the Anderson High School mascot. Thank you for your most tastefully worded letter. I do not question that Anderson High School had honorable intentions by adopting a Native American logo and name for its high school back in 1937, or by desiring to retain that logo and name today in the year 2018. However, I must be honest to say that in spite of your good intentions, I do not feel honored. For me, the word Redskins is one of the most racially charged words in the English language. I do not object to the word Indian, nor do I object to the label "American Indian" or "Native American." Redskin is totally different. It is offensive, it is a racial slur. The word connotes a historical time when American Indians were killed, their skin peeled or stripped from them, then traded for a bounty. The red skin was proof of deliberate killing for deliberate riddance and deliberate gain. None of the above is honorable. The intent may be to honor, but if the recipient feels insulted, offended, or degraded, is it really an honor? I suggest that review of this position by the National Congress of American Indians and current scientific research findings regarding the impact of language and the impact of Indians being used as mascots upon the American Indians themselves. After reviewing this research, I sincerely hope you will choose to truly honor us and change the name. Again, I truly appreciate your letter, truly appreciate your contacting me, but do not appreciate the word red skin.
Louise Lware?
My name's Louise Lware, I'm a 40-year resident of Anderson Township and will be the grandmother of an incoming freshman at Anderson High School. And my remarks and my comments are brief. I'm thinking about today's children, about the children of the future. I'm thinking about, about coming into a school when imagining myself as a Native American student and seeing a logo that is a caricature of my people, and wondering how that would feel. I imagine that it would be hard to listen when the other team shouts "scalp 'em" during a ballgame, and I imagine that somewhere during that school career, there would be someone who would say "hey, chief," or "how" to me as I walk down the halls. So I think that keeping that away from students in our schools would be very difficult. I also think that when our students of the dominant culture are learning that as part of the history of indigenous people, they are not being honored by being given the full truth. But if we teach the true history of indigenous people and their role and the reality that they have had in the history of the United States and colonial America, if we teach about termination, assimilation, if we teach about their challenges and their struggles, then what will be the cognitive dissonance of our students who see true people represented as they are, and then this logo that we have that's a caricature? So I think that the mascot that we have does not serve the best educational needs of our students, and if it doesn't, then it's time to let it go. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I'm a resident of Anderson Township for the last 14 years. I'm reading on behalf of a teacher from Kewaunee, Wisconsin, who contacted us with a similar story. Dear members of the Forest Hills School Board, I've been following the news from your district, and I'm quite happy that you have the opportunity to help all students in your district have a safer experience as they matriculate. As a retired teacher of 36 years in Kewaunee, Wisconsin, I was able to help and watch my own school board study and make decisions based upon the district's previous team name of Indians. Of course, it was a painful process, but my district read the research, they saw that stereotypes harm not only Native American students, but all students, as they do learn to stereotype other groups. Of course, you couldn't ascribe to that type of hurtful learning. In 2010, the Kewaunee District, led by its Board of Education, decided to retire the name. A suggestion for the new name was sent to every boxholder in the school district, and those were submitted. Then a committee was formed to winnow the suggestions, and the top three were published. Every student in the district, pre-K through seniors, voted. So much school pride and enthusiasm was generated. At a Fall pep rally, a huge banner was unfurled with the new name of Storm. Every student and teacher was given a Kewaunee Storm t-shirt, which was sponsored by local businesses, so much excitement and such loud cheers. Although my Board had originally paid some lawyer fees and public relations company fees, in the end, those themes seemed rather wasteful, as the public relations firm just advised them to retire the mascot on a busy news day. Although there was a cost, the district had been phasing out the logo for years, so there was just a picture to be painted over on the gym wall, and the wrestling mats were turned to face the back of the walls. Those mats were repainted. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Suzanne Wells, and my family moved to Anderson Township 16 years ago precisely because of the quality of our public schools. I work in the Division of Oncology at Cincinnati Children's, and my laboratory works on curing cancer types that take young lives every single day. When catastrophe hits families, the only thing left is community, and Anderson is a community of kindness. In this school district, our kids keep things in perspective. They're compassionate and inclusive, everyone counts, and why? Because we taught them that. They can disagree strongly, but they remain respectful, including on this issue, and because of that, they can move on together, win or lose. What we have here today is a passionate disagreement about a school identifier, it is not a catastrophe like the loss of a child. Those of you raised as Redskins are united in happy memories and pride. Who wouldn't understand? Those who will not see this name at best, as a racial slur, and at worst, as the bloody scalp of slaughtered Native Americans, for which the US government offered rewards. I don't think this name is aligned with inclusion. None of my colleagues at Children's felt comfortable with that name. Should they move their families here? This then becomes a district business issue. One gentleman at the last meeting had a simple solution for people like me. If you don't like it, move. But is this how we want to advertise our school district and township to new families? Is this what our children should say to each other, once the Board makes a decision either way? Are we going to abandon our friends and neighbors over a motto, or will we remain connected as a community for when hard times really hit? Members of our Board, with my German history in mind, I have not voted for you to align with the majority at all costs and at all times. Instead, I voted for you to do the right thing, and this sometimes is hard. Surely, we can adopt a new motto for our kids. Thank you.
My name is Pat Burning. I have been a resident of Anderson and Forest Hills for over 40 years. Our son played varsity sports at Anderson, and I currently have a grandson who will be, who is a junior at Anderson. I have attended the committee meetings and school board meetings concerning this topic. I have been very pleased with the committee's process, which has been open, transparent, and extensive. I have listened in agreement, as you stated, your primary concern and goal is the education of students of Forest Hills. Of course, you also need to take into consideration cost, tradition, and concerns and opinions of the committee, community. I hope you agree with me that one of the most important educational values we can impart on our students is honoring the dignity of each individual, to treat each other with respect and compassion. We have good information that there are Native Americans who are not concerned with the use of this word, but we have also heard from several groups and individuals who do find the word very offensive. Some of those are residents of Anderson and attending Forest Hills schools. My question to the committee is, what lessons are we sending to our students if we keep the name? On the other hand, the message we will be teaching them by our example, if we have courage to change the name, we will show them that we respect and have compassion for the persons who are offended, that we honor the dignity of each individual, even when it goes against tradition, costs money, and is not supported by the entire community.
I've lived here for over 50 years. I fought to keep this, the Winds of Anderson, from being built, because it's built on a Native American burial mound and village. I'm frustrated, tried to get it stopped. However, it wasn't for me and my map, after the village was started and finished, that the place got through this Ohio Supreme Court. All right, now my anger is that for all these years, everybody in this township has been the Redskins. This is the same logo, it's not a caricature, it is not offensive, it is the same as on our Buffalo nickel, or Indian head nickel. It is the, how can I put this? Anyway, it's not offensive, and the Redskins is no more offensive than a Fighting Irish and things of this nature. It's just embarrassing. Thirdly, I want to tell you that, I'm not good at this. I'm angry because so many people think that it's offensive. I've got five grandkids, three grandkids, and they all go to Anderson, and I went to Anderson. I don't understand the problem with, with this logo, I just can't figure it out. All over this country, there are logos of all sorts and sizes, and it's just frustrating as heck, besides the miserable contractor that was hired and has backed up... Besides, the miserable contractor that was hired and is backed up by somebody on this board, who didn't supply heat for my grandkids during the wintertime. It's embarrassing. So that's what I have to say, and I don't want you to misconstrue my thought process about the Native Americans, because I have the deepest respect for them. Actually, I'd like to see Andrew Jackson's face removed from our money, because he is the most offensive president ever.
Cheryl Mark.
So here we are. The social justice warriors have decided they don't like the word Redskins, and they come to lecture us, the unenlightened. They lecture about racism and hurt feelings in hopes of having us all blow in the direction of the current political wind. At the last meeting, we heard from parents fretting, they may have to talk to their kids about the awful Redskins word. Well, I've got a thought on that, and I think the kids just might get it. It's simple. When we say Redskins, we meet a skilled and fierce competitor, a proud warrior loyal to his or her tribe, in our case, team, and loyal to their cause. A Redskin is respectful of those who've come before and dedicated to show the way to those who follow. A Redskins is honored by the skill and the ability of the opponent, and when the contest is done, win or lose, we can come together in the spirit of good fellowship and good sportsmanship. There's another attribute of a Redskins, courage, and that is what we need from this school board, courage. Stand up against this ill-political wind. Go the way of the Redskins, proud, courageous, respectful, loyal, and let the attributes of the Redskins serve our kids well, both now and in the future. Let's recognize, honor, and teach the diverse history of the Native people in southwest Ohio. And what if we do away with the Redskins name? Because we're human, any name chosen will also be in some way flawed. And in 50 or 10 years from now, a new name may fall out of favor, and another group will find offensive and come demanding that the name be changed. Let's be proud and unafraid, and when someone points the finger of racism or hate in our direction, let's reject that notion and not cave into it. Let's stand as one, raise our voice, and let the world know, once an Anderson Redskins, always an Anderson Redskins.
Matthew Burning.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the board for letting me speak. I'm a junior at Anderson High School, and I want to say that, first of all, there would be no debate if the school was started today, there would be no debate about getting rid of the name. It is 100% a derogatory term. Merian Webster, Oxford Dictionary, one of the most, two of the most noted dictionaries in the world, both say that it is a dated derogatory term. A lot of people do not know where the name Redskins comes from. The name Redskins was originally derived from Britain basically saying, for every scalp of a Native American that you killed, that is a fact, every scalp of a Native American that you killed, they would reimburse you, because when colonists came over, they killed off a lot of the Native Americans, and Britain supplied them with money for doing so. I 100% am not proud to be a Redskins. I am proud to be an Anderson student. However, I am not proud to be a part of a mascot, who is a very derogatory term, and is very offensive to many Native Americans. Thank you very much.
Martha Beeman.
Thank you. I am reading a statement from Shannon Toomey, who can't be here. She was a student at Air and a graduate of Anderson. She credits her fantastic Forest Hills school education with getting her into the university of her dreams and helping her get a job that she couldn't be more proud of. She worked, excuse me, she works for Viking Penguin Books and lives in New York City. This is what she writes. "The amazing thing about learning is that it doesn't stop at graduation. I loved Anderson, but as I started learning about other cultures and hearing different perspectives, I realized that I was only given a small percentage of the history of our country, especially when it comes to the treatment of our Native people by settlers. Instead of rejecting that new knowledge or blaming a curriculum set by powers beyond our school's control, I vowed to learn as much as I could and to do whatever I could to make sure younger generations of students were given the access to the different perspectives of history that I had missed out on. Laying to rest the highly offensive R-word as Anderson's mascot will not only show Anderson to be the respectful learning institution we all know it is, it will give its student population an amazing opportunity to learn about the Native populations of Ohio. Beyond that, the incredible opportunities presented by the Alumni for Change will give students a once-in-a-lifetime chance to create an Anderson mascot for the 21st century, one that reflects their passion, school spirit, and openness to recognizing past wrongs and trying to make them right, something that, if recent news headlines are any indication, young people are incredibly passionate about." Finally, Toomey writes that she hopes that 20 years from now, current-
Ms. St. Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shahari Mary.
How you doing? My name is Jerry, Jerry Mary, and my family has, my family's been a resident on this continent for 530 years. What I like to say is, there are Holocaust deniers, there are flat-earthers, and the thing they have in common is, they, you can't change their mind. You can't change their mind. Despite the overwhelming evidence, to the contrary, that the rest of the world has viewed as facts, they use old information to validate the agenda that they choose to believe. You know, there are people who believe 9/11 was a vast Jewish conspiracy, and sadly, there are people who believe that Sandy Hook never happened. And yes, even today, there are people who refuse to believe that Redskins is a derogatory term. I am Native American. I am Indigenous. I belong to local and national organizations with memberships that are in the thousands. And I am here to tell you, we are offended, but those people who disagree with me, I can't change their mind, but to the rest of Anderson Township, to the school board, I ask you to do the right thing and stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Kelly Holterhoff.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Holterhoff, and I graduated from Anderson High School in 2003. Several months ago, I spoke in support of changing the nickname and logo. Since then, I've met a lot of inspiring folks who have given me an education in new perspectives. But among all the positive interactions, one anonymous interaction will remain with me. Someone posted a group picture of cheering AHS students and circled a young woman wearing spirit wear. The young woman was misidentified as me, and it made the rounds for a while. This technique that seeks to disqualify a person's character is common, and with the prevalence of social media, it's remarkably easy. Today's world is challenging. Young people are more connected now than ever before, and a responsible, educated worldview is essential to their personal and professional success. Employers don't just look at cover letters and resumes anymore. Pictures viewed out of context can cause problems, and we must take care to identify possible cultural insensitivities so that we can avoid perpetuating them. And if we don't, we risk teaching young people that these words and actions are acceptable. Now that we know more, now that studies have proven the adverse effects of a racialized mascot, now that we've seen how this issue divides the very community we are trying to honor, we must admit that it is unacceptable to continue using this word and image. The young people whose futures you are trying to protect are counting on you to put them in the best possible position for success. That picture very well could have been me. I went to games and wore spirit wear. I trusted that the names we chanted and the things we wore were okay, because the school encouraged us to do so. Diversity, equity, and inclusion lessons begin early and are often learned through example. Changing the nickname and logo to reflect the open and welcoming community we are all a part of is imperative. Thank you.
Thank you for everyone's participation. Item 7.1, Mr. Prebles.
Mr. Broadwater. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's a membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. This afternoon, I had the pleasure of going to Anderson High School, where I saw that 27 students had signed college letters of intent, and I also learned today that there are 19 students at Turpin High School who signed letters of intent. I believe the Ohio High School Athletic Association and the regulations in which we participate in are great for our school system, and so I recommend to approve the district's continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2018-19 school year. This time.
I'll make a motion to approve the district's continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2018-2019 school year.
Specifically, are you asking that we approve the resolution set forth in the agenda?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Dr. Heiss.
Ms. Joyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Barber.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss, yes. Mr. Fruman.
Yes. Item 8.1, Section 8, is the board discussion. I'm pleased to let everyone know that we have been through the treasurer selection process, and the board has chosen our own Anderson Township resident, Elena Cropper, to be our next treasurer. We're really excited. She's accepted. We are in the process of completing the contract and having her start date determined, and I would expect her appointment to be on the next agenda. Item 8.2 is other board discussion. Ms. Barber, I think you had something you wanted to address with us?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I am fortunate to be a representative on the safety, the district's safety committee? Should I just take it off? Yeah, maybe that's better. On the district's safety committee, and while I had a briefing with John Eckert a few months ago to kind of get up to speed on what our programs are, today was the first full session where we all met. There were probably 30 to 40 people in the room, from township to township, to the buildings, to representatives from each building, the fire department, the police department, everybody in one room. The plans that this district has for safety are awesome. I heard Julie was on this committee before me and said the same thing. A lot of it's private, because it needs to be that way. It protects the student's safety, but there are things that can be talked about. The big thing on the agenda today was, we are getting ready to do a full-scale EMT drill in June, I think it's June 27th, June 27th, where we are going to create a real-life crisis situation and pretend like it's real. It's going to involve the township and all of the, all of the rescue services, and so we'll really get to test what would happen if something happened. So something I wanted to bring this to the table tonight was, that's all in place for if something happens. I want to start talking about what we do to prevent things from happening. So you all know, we've talked about this offline, on and off, all year. There was a school shooting at the beginning of the year, I want to say January, it wasn't too long after the start of the year, and we started talking about it, whether it was because we were getting emails with questions, you know, I think people think that we're really distracted with other issues, but the truth is, we're talking about all kinds of things all the time. So we were getting suggestions from community members, and we had started talking a little bit about resource officers. So I asked Jim not too long after that, what discussions have been had by the board in the past about resource officers, and how do we get that conversation started? Obviously, money is an issue. From what I've learned, it's about $100,000 to employ one. Is that about right?
Salary and benefits on a recurring basis, yes.
Yeah, so we have one, and currently, the township actually provides that for us. So that is not a district expense. So, I'm putting it on the table. How do we even begin talking about preventative measures like resource officers?
Well, we have begun talking about it. You and I have talked about it. Mr. Prebles and I have talked about it, and I think this is, I don't know, every school anywhere in the country that has had one of these tragedies has always thought, it can't happen here, and I don't want that to be us. I think we should discuss it. I'm glad the safety committee is doing the work they do. We got to start putting pen to paper and figuring out how we find a way to make this work. I wonder if, you know, I understand there are people out there that can do safety audits, and I wonder if that's something that might be worth looking into. I think maybe, Scott, that's something in our weekly meetings you and I can talk a bit more about and see if it's something we can find a way to start moving forward on, but I get it, and we all get it. DeeDee, Forrest, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think, bringing up, we've had one SRO for 50 years, and it's worked, because the world that we lived in for the past 50 years needed one SRO, and we had that person that we could call, and he, throughout the years, has been a fantastic resource. But I think we all agree, my goodness, just over the past two years, how much the world's changed. And our priority always is, is number one is the safety of our kids, ahead of all else. And so, yeah, it's a different world, and, you know, it's just shocking that things that can happen, I mean, last week, everything that we do and the communities that are doing it, and it's still happening in those schools. So, no, it's a priority.
Mr. Fruman, we have been reviewing with the Hamilton County Schools that are associated with the Hamilton County ESC Educational Service Center, an organization called Social Sentinel. One of the things that we have learned a lot-
One of the things that we have learned a lot about this topic is that much of what we learn about people who conduct these horrible acts is that there is some type of a social trail or some type of information that was provided to friends or to acquaintances in a electronic or digital fashion. So we have combined efforts with all of the Hamilton County Schools. This is an agency that we are reviewing and I was going to bring this to you on Thursday morning because it's something that the school district has an opportunity to get itself involved in, where there's a contract based on the number of students in your school system. Because it's a Hamilton County consortium-style arrangement, those prices are greatly reduced. Every alert stems from, they, they have over 450,000 behavioral threat indicators to over 1 billion publicly available social media posts per day that surface. And their database is all about looking at what's happening in the digital world and the social world behind. And then there's a full-fledged system that they have in place that other school systems have reviewed. Sycamore School System is used, is going to be utilizing this system, the Mason School System, and several others in our area. And I've talked to their superintendents and I've also talked to the Hamilton County Educational Service Center Assistant Superintendent regarding this. Mr. Eckert has done some investigation on this particular format for us. It doesn't mitigate the conversation, but it is another way for the school system, in an effort to find the, the most effective ways to prevent or to have some sense of what's happening out there. What has, what we talked about today in the committee when I was there is, over my time as an educator, what used to be difficult to get information from students and parents has really become very easy in this day and age because of the alertness and the way that people are aware of certain messages, certain changes in the behavior of students and the behavior of families. And what the police officer said today is, if you see something, you should inform your parent, your guidance counselor, your teacher, so that there is acknowledgement of some change or something that's happening. So, we continue to look, Mrs. Barber, at opportunities to increase security and safety in our system, most of which over the last few years, absent of the generous, and I mean that, generous contribution of our community to upgrade our facilities and to provide security vestibules. Those are significant increases in the security in our schools. If we continue with the things that Betsy Ryan has been working on with the social side and with the human aspects of school, and continue to sort of put that web around our students and have many, many different indicators of what might be changing behavior or what flashpoints are, and work with authorities like we did today, I think we can provide a safer arrangement for our students, not discounting that anomaly that, God forbid, ever happens in our school or any other. So, I'll be presenting this to the board because I believe it is a good thing for our schools and another way for us to act in a way that is close to how students communicate with each other and how they communicate with their, their parents and family. So, I did not bring this here tonight purposefully, but since we're on the subject, it is another thing that I think our school district should engage in to provide a safer environment for students in addition to the conversation that we're having now.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Prebels. Elizabeth, can we ask you to keep spearheading with this discussion with the safety committee and, Scott, you and I will follow up a little bit more on these and other issues. All that stuff's great. We, we've done a lot with the security vestibules and the monitors we've got in place, but at the end of the day, we've got nine buildings and one SRO and that, that's not a good formula. All right. Any other board discussion? All right. Item 9.1. Oh, wonderful. Mr. Spencer, Mr. Fellows. Anderson Interpin High School, class of 2018.
Are these copies? Well, it's been nine amazing months with this senior class and four great years. And so, I know Mr. Spencer and I are excited to stand before you all and read these few words. The 2018 candidates for graduation from Anderson High School are submitted to the Board of Education for approval, subject to each student's meeting the requirements as set forth by the Forest Hills Board of Education.
I know I can speak for Rob and myself. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with the 644 graduates between Anderson and Turpin. I've not only watched those young adults grow and learn, but for us to have the opportunity to grow and learn from them. This is one of the best board meetings of the year because we have this opportunity to recommend these graduates. The 2018 graduates for graduation from Turpin High School are submitted to the Board of Education for approval, subject to each student's meeting the requirements as set forth by the Forest Hills Board of Education. This time, we make a motion to approve the granting of diplomas to the candidates listed in the attachments. And any students who enroll in Anderson or Turpin High Schools after this date, subject to satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements as noted for graduation.
Thank you. A motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to-
Senator General, what is it, 9 through?
9.1 to 14.1.
Thank you.
Mr. Fruman, there are 344 graduates at Anderson, 100 graduates in Turpin High School. I'd like to remind everyone that commencement ceremonies for both high schools will be at B&amp;B, BB&amp;T Arena on the campus of Northern Kentucky University on Sunday, May 27, 2018.
Thank you.
And I would like to remind those graduates that it is subject to satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. So if you're watching this on TV, get studying. We have another two weeks.
Um-
A week? You got one week.
Item 10.1, builder's risk insurance. Mr. Broadwater?
Now, it's your turn. Sorry. He's been trying to get it. I know why I-
Check. Okay. Good evening. Business operations. We have quite a few items. I'm going to start with 10.1. District builder's risk insurance. And the builder's risk insurance was started as we started into the bond construction. It provides coverage for construction materials, flood, earthquakes, off costs during the, the course of construction. The policy rates have continued to remain flat as we've gone through the process. And the good news is, there have been no claims reported to our insurance carrier. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the builder's risk insurance carrier per attached premium proposal through Berry Insurance Group for the period of June 1, 2018 to June 1, 2019, as presented. Next is 10.2, change orders for the pre-purchase of district lighting. Through the construction process, the lighting has been pulled out of the bond monies and we've gone through Graybar Electric Company in order to get better pricing. You can see that we have a change order for Mercer Elementary, which is actually a refund as we purchased a few more lights than we needed. And the change order for Maddox Elementary is for $2,520 and the deduct was $1,280 at Mercer. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Graybar Electric Company Incorporated in the amount of, when you add those up, $1,240.11 as presented. Next, we have 10.3, change orders for Anderson High School building renovations. And the renovations through, as you recall, Travelers is now the company that has taken over with Vertex Engineering and Performance Construction. The first change order is change order 22 in the amount of $24,310. The various changes consist of what we have listed there. We have masonry, around $5,000. Demoing a stone wall in Quarter B at Anderson High School was about $2,300. Patching plumbing areas was about $2,700. Moving the storm underground rough-in from Room 142 to Room 14A was around $8,000. And relocating the sanitary underground rough-in to Room 147 was around $6,100. Some of that work, again, carries over from last summer. That work was done last summer. Change order 23, in the amount of $33,346, is various changes consisting of the following. It was from one of the bulletins that was issued for structural coordination items found during shop drawing reviews, and that is $33,346. It is in the multi-purpose building, the new multi-purpose building. The lentils that were originally in the design were found to not be strong enough to support, so lentils were, new lentils were designed, which means you then have to reinforce the walls and some other items along with that. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Travelers Bond and Specialty Insurance in the amount of $57,656 as presented. And the last thing I will say about Anderson is, this is the first few change orders you're starting to see come through for Anderson High School. And again, I remind everybody that we do have contingency monies in the program and we're still doing fine at Anderson and the work is, is starting to crank up. And this summer, you're going to see it going very, very fast. So that we're starting to get into Anderson High School change orders as we go through there. 10.4, we have a resolution of urgent necessity. And this is due to a detention pond in the back of Anderson High School that needs to be completed. The Hamilton County has been requesting that we expedite this and it's necessary that we do that through the urgent necessity. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution of urgent necessity as shown in the attachment that has been provided. For 10.5, change order for Summit Elementary. As we continue to close out Summit Elementary, change order 37 is for $5,705. Composite panel modifications were around $3,000. That is on the lower roof of Summit Elementary. The panels had to be modified due to a measurement that was not correct. And the conduit and slab, $2,636. And that was out front of Summit Elementary where that took place. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Mark Spalding Construction Company in the amount of $5,705 as presented. Next is change orders for Turpin High School. And for Turpin High School, change order 47 is in the amount of $28,177. Some of the various changes there, provide steel frame vision lights for about $1,800. Miscellaneous electric, which took place in some of the art rooms at Turpin, was $11,600 approximately. Repair existing floor in Room 210, which is the engineering room, for around $2,700. Furnish and install plastic laminate closure assemblies was around $2,200. Provide new 90-minute door, doors for openings was around $6,300. And that was in, in conjunction with Anderson Town Fire, Anderson Township Fire Department requesting those. Repiping existing rooftop hose bib was $3,300. So the total of $28,177 for change order 47. Change order 48 was $11,026. Door H210B revisions was around $8,000. Emergency lighting in Room C214, power outlets is around $3,000. So again, that adds up to $11,026. And for that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Monarch Construction Company in the amount of $39,203 as presented. Last thing I will say about the Turpin change orders. Turpin, we have an extremely aggressive summer coming up, but the value that we have used for change orders is still underneath the contingency. We're getting close and through the summer, it, it's going to be, probably go over a little bit with us, but right now, we're still doing pretty good with the change orders. Item 10.7, amendment to Zimmer Company. I'm sorry.
While you move on, as Mr. Broadwater runs through those change orders and all of us sit up here calmly listening, you all ought to know that we receive all this information in advance of the meeting. We have an opportunity to review, ask questions about this and every other item on the agenda. We do so. We also get a very detailed spreadsheet of all the change orders that are going on at all of the buildings that have been completed thus far and that remain under construction in that regard, really just the two high schools. These things are monitored carefully. They are provided to us and then again, in a summary fashion, and we make sure we're working within the dollars that we anticipated to spend. And at this point, I think we're running at about 1% and we anticipate maybe being in the area of 3, probably closer to 4%.
I would say so, yep.
So, just because we're sitting here not asking questions now, doesn't mean we haven't been asking questions throughout the entire procedure and on each individual change order as they are addressed to us before the meeting. Really, the meeting's just where we approve the work that's already been done to get to the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Broadwater.
Thank you. And I can assure you that the Board of Education asks a lot of questions as we go through these. So, Mr. Fruman is absolutely correct. For item 10.7, it is the amendment to Zimmer Company Incorporated Consultant Agreement. The amendment to the Zimmer Company Incorporated Consultant Agreement for Owner Representative Services covers the period of March 1, 2018 through the end of this year, December 31, 2018. The superintendent recommends the board approve the amendment to the Zimmer Company Incorporated Consultant Agreement for Owner Representative Services for the period of March 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, as shown in the attachment. For item 10.8, this is a request to advertise for bids. The administration requests permission authorize the treasurer to advertise for bids for the following projects as specifications are completed. And these are projects that are going to be worked on throughout the summer. These are items that are separate of the bond, but they're also items that we have to get finished. Number one, the Turpin High School walk-in freezer replacement, that is going to be funded through our food service fund, which is completely self-funded. And they are going to be doing that in conjunction with the timing of what's happening in the Turpin cafeteria through the bond construction project. So we are working together with that, but it is going to be funded through the food service fund. Item two there, the second item to go out to bid, Summit Sherwood Maddox Elementary Schools partial roof replacements. The funding for that is going to take place through our permanent improvement funding. And again, those are just partial roof replacements that we have found to be necessary and we are going to work on those this summer so that we can get those finished up. And the treasurer recommends the board approve the request to authorize the treasurer to advertise for bids for the stated requests. Item 10.9, what I'd like to do is go through the facilities update and give you some things that maybe are a little more exciting than advertising for bids. But what we are going to go through is the facility update. If you remember our vision in the light green pathways and innovation underneath there, which you probably cannot read, it's about establishing authentic learning through 21st century learning environments and practices. So through the construction process, outside of all the bond funds, what the district has decided is important is that we provide our students with 21st learning, 21st century learning environments, which means we're looking at furniture and we're looking at technology. The elementary buildings, we have complete, completed. And I think if you're a parent of one of the students in those buildings, you would say it's turned out very, very well. It's, it's really moved what our teachers do in the classroom forward. And I think the, you hear personalized learning quite a bit these days and I think we've moved towards that with the furniture, but more importantly, with our staff jumping on board because they can see that our kids get excited to learn that way. So the first frame I have up there for the board is, as we enter an aggressive time in the summer for our high schools, we have worked this entire year, and when I say "we," it's Natasha's curriculum department along with us, Megan Lawson, Tricia Underwood, Amy Wettingale, have worked extremely hard to go through with us and work with our teachers so that when they have the chance to select the classroom furniture, they know what they want. We want it to be individualized for the teacher, but you'll also see the way we did it. We developed a, and if you look at this, we developed kind of a little shopping cart for our teachers to go through. And if you click there, you can see that we gave them different types of tables and desks to go through. And there's some other pages they can go through. We've got a budget on there. We gave each of our classroom teachers a budget and we developed that budget through our experience in the elementaries and what the pricing of the furniture is going to be. So we gave each classroom teacher a chance to do a little bit of shopping, but also be able to select the type of furniture they feel- able to select the type of furniture they feel they would use in the classroom. And I can tell you that just today, I had a conversation with a math teacher who I would have said was never going to change his ways in the classroom because he had him pretty well set, and he, he and I were talking about the furniture in his classroom, and I will tell you, he seemed like an expert on flexible furniture. He's excited about getting tables that he can move into different groups, different individualized spaces in the classroom. If you notice, if you go back to the initial frame there, the idea of caves, campfires, watering holes, you also have sand pits and mountaintop are just explaining the different zones that you try and create in the classroom for each type of learner that you may have. And along with that, the next slide is going to show you what we did for our technology. And with our technology, if you click on that first link, what we did initially is I sat down with our architect, this is Anderson, for example. If you slide through there, we went through each and every single classroom in Anderson High School and determined what is the technology that we're going to use. First and foremost, the access points for the wireless, but then also, we are giving our teachers the opportunity for a short throw projector or two, if that's what they determine they want, or a TV, and we also had to determine where do we need the power, where do we need our data drops. So what may seem like a small adventure, this has been about six months in the making trying to get this all settled down so that when we get to the summer, we don't have any hiccups, and I can assure you, we did the exact same work over at Turpin as we went through with Mr. Fellows and Mr. Spencer, and they sat down with each one of their teachers so that when we're ready to go this summer, they're ready to go with the technology. So I thought I'd show you a little bit about what we're doing in the classroom. It's not about just purchasing furniture and technology. It's about bringing our staff along, and I will tell you, our staff has been unbelievable in knowing that that's what our kids want, and they're moving forward with that. So the next frame, looking at the multi-purpose facility at Anderson High School, you can see on the upper right, you see the bridge is coming out of the Anderson High School. That's where the one change order was. We had a lenal change so that the structure would be a little bit more supported. We have a, a, from a drone picture on the bottom right of what it's going to look like, and I can tell you that we're excited. We've got, on the left, you can kind of see the glass in there, that's where the weight room's going to be for the students. You're going to have a weight room that our Anderson Athletic Boosters are working very, very hard. Mr. Turchian was here this evening, who's working very, very hard to get that for our kids, and I think that's just going to be a tremendous state-of-the-art facility. Above that is going to be a multi-purpose gym, but it's also going to be a testing site since we have a lot of students that test with our AP and also end-of-the-year course exams. So that is, the next one there is the science classrooms. The initial design, it was going to look a little bit different than that. We worked with our physics teachers, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Brandon, Ms. Underwood, Ms. Lawson worked very well with us, and we were able to redesign it a little bit so that it's ready for our project lead-the-way type hands-on experiments. You can see cord reels coming out of the grid. The grid there is going to support any type of clamps that they might want to bring some things down, and with our physics kids, they're a lot smarter than us adults, so I'm sure they'll get it figured out. But that, that is one side of the classroom, which is the, which we call the maker space. There is another side, which you can't see, which is the actual classroom, so it's a very large classroom, and we're excited to see what our kids are going to get done in there. The special education wing is the old administrative wing right at the circle, and you can see we're getting close. That's what we call Phase Four. Phase Four should be punched out here within a week or two. We'll get those floors waxed, and we'll have furniture in there ready to go, and the idea was to move the special education classrooms nearer to the circle so that those kiddos that may need a closer exit is, it is there for them. Next, we have air conditioning in Anderson High School. We've got it. We've got, for the first time ever since nineteen sixty, Mr. Fellows, you're pretty excited. So I can tell you, the air conditioning and the way it works is you have different zones, and you've got to tweak it, and it takes a little bit of time, but we were in the Fine Arts Room at the end of the day presenting some things, Mr. Prebles and I, and it felt good in there, and the air conditioning is working, and we're going to be very, very aggressive this summer to get the rest of the classrooms done with that. The last thing I will tell you about Anderson to the board, I know you know this, but we have worked very hard with Travelers and Vertex and Performance, and if you have not seen what our scheduling looks like, I've got this in my hand, and as you flip through, I can assure you, every single week, we go through this with a fine-tooth comb and where we're at, and this summer, it is going to be very, very aggressive, just like at Turpin, but we're very excited that the majority of our classrooms at Anderson High School are going to be finished as we go through it. For Turpin, an update there, the Friends of Turpin PTO Award went to Monarch Construction, who is completing our project. They have done a fantastic job, and Jen Slesell of the Turpin PTO came out and gave them that award for working so well with the staff and being so accommodating. English hallway, if you remember looking, those of you that have been in Turpin, if you look through the English hallway, looking towards the athletic department, it now looks like classrooms. You've got lockers there, and the English hallway is pretty much complete. We're punching that out, and we're moving on to social studies ahead of schedule at Turpin. The next frame, looking at what used to be Mr. Spencer's office, which is now a wall right there, which has a classroom inside, and to the right, there used to be a hole in the floor that was patched, not patched up, but was reinforced with structured steel, and the flooring is down, so we were able to add classrooms there. On the lower slide, that is a picture of the new English classroom, which is completed at Turpin High School. Okay, last few things to go through. At Turpin High School, the Learning Commons is going to be complete this summer, Anderson will be next summer. The Learning Commons has been a project we've done outside of many things in the bond. We brought an architect in to redesign what that Learning Commons is going to look like. We had them design all the different learning zones, the caves, campfires, mountaintops, and so forth. We, we had them do some isometric drawings about how it was going to look as we set it out. We sat down with Mr. Spencer, we sat down with Ms. Hemelgarn, who is in the Learning Commons, and we went through that. And the next slide, we have given them options for the fabric that can go on, the furniture that's going to be in there, and we also gave them options for the type of flexible furniture that could go in the Learning Commons along with the technology. So at Turpin High School, at the beginning of next year, you're going to see a brand-new Learning Commons, which is pretty exciting. We've got a maker space that's going to be in there, and I think the kids are really, really going to like that. Last slide I have to finish up, I've got this same chart as what we used last month, only May is now where we are. If we were to put this out, this is where we are with the projects. In the yellow up top in the third column, excuse me, what that represents is a change from the prior month, but you can see we're clipping along pretty well. Anderson and Turpin really are going to be the two projects you see major changes as we go through that, and we will monitor those as we continue to go through. So ends my report. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Broadwater?
Mr. Frum, oftentimes when we see an amendment to a contract with an organization...
It's an increase in costs, and I would like to remind the board that the reduction in the, or the amendment to the Zimmer contract is a reduction of about forty percent of what the board was paying for that service over the last couple of years. So I want to thank Mike for his time to invest in making that contract more commensurate with the amount of work that's being done in our district by the Zimmer Corporation.
Excellent, and it's because he's working so hard and picking up the other work, but thank you. All right, curriculum, Ms. Adams.
Item eleven point one, our books for World War II, a new course for social studies grades ten through twelve. It's a combination of historical nonfiction and historical fiction. These books will be available for review in our department until the June twenty-fifth board meeting, and that's when we'll come to you for a formal request of these materials to be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources, item twelve point one, Ms. Carnahan.
We have a very lengthy HR report this evening. Item twelve point one, A, resignations on page two. Item B. Item B covers a number of items following. Item C is change of contract days. Item D, change of salary. Item E would be appointments. Item F, special service appointments for seventeen eighteen, and this goes on page three, four, and five. At the top of page six, we have item G. These are our appointments of our coaches, consultants, and advisors for seventeen eighteen. Item H, student, teacher, or intern. Item I, you can tell it is field trip season in Forest Hills. These are our volunteers on page seven and the top of page eight. We have our Camp Kern student volunteers. Item J, substitute personnel. Item K, administrator benefit document. Item L, supplemental salary schedule. Item M, we do have a leave of absences request for eighteen nineteen. Item N, change in contract days. Again, these are eighteen nineteen. Item O, change of assignment. Item P, appointments. Item Q, special service appointments for eighteen nineteen. Item R, the reappointment of the assistant superintendent. Item S, reappointment of administrators. Item T, reappointment of personnel. The first group there would be our certified teachers, our staff, certified staff, teachers, pages twelve to eighteen. And if you see, it's one indicates one-year contract, two indicates a two-year, I'm sorry, there are only one-year contracts, and C indicates continuing contracts in this area. At the page nineteen, operational staff. Here we see one-year, two-year contracts and continuing contracts through page twenty-one. At the top of twenty-two, we have U, which would be our consultants, coaches, and advisors for eighteen nineteen. Item V, student, teachers for eighteen nineteen. And since the last board meeting in April, the staff has increased to eight hundred six point three-two FTEs, and this is due to the addition of two full-time custodians, mostly because of the increased square footage in our buildings due to construction. And you can see this on our FTE worksheet that Mrs. Monk is showing at this time.
Right, we talked about that last month. Thank you.
The superintendent recommends the board approve the HR report as presented.
Any questions for Ms. Carnahan? No? Thank you. Student Services, Ms. Ryan.
Student Services has items thirteen point one and thirteen point two. Thirteen point one is a revision to an overnight trip that you approved back in March of this year. The dates previously were June the tenth through the nineteenth, and we are looking at a new set of dates, June third to the sixteenth, so that's the revision. Thirteen point two is a residency waiver. Our board policy is, allows continuance of a senior student to attend in Forest Hills in the remainder of the school year through the last four days of school if they should move after the commencement of classes. And this is a residency waiver for Madeline Reyes, student at Turpin High School. The superintendent is recommending that you board approve the date revision for the overnight trip in item thirteen point one and the residency waiver in item thirteen point two.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Our treasurer's report tonight will be presented by Mr. Prebles.
Thank you. I'm certain that Mr. Giuffre is glad he's this far away from me giving the forecast report, but you have an attached, you received, board received the five-year forecast in the new format and updated for our current circumstances, and if you look at the document, we can see that it's seven point zero-two-zero in our cash balance. We are still going to be solvent through two thousand and twenty with above four million dollars in the cash balance, and that is, shows again that the three-year commitment to maintain a levy has gone into its sixth year, so we're happy about that. There were some other items in the treasurer's report. The goals that we have for the year, account and vendor maintenance consolidation, we have eliminated, inactivated, or consolidated hundreds of vendor accounts and thousands of budgetary receipt accounts. This is tedious work that has, that the talented team in the accounting department took on, and will save the district many hours. In the inventory goal that we had for the year, there are changed reporting standards regarding the accuracy and materiality of an inventory's for financial statements reporting. There are other types of inventories, insurance, fixed assets, monitoring, et cetera, and we were using one system for all. Now our financial statement inventory has a threshold of ten thousand dollars, and we appreciate the support of the policy committee in making this happen in the fiscal year, saving the time of not booking and locating three hundred dollar assets is better than five hundred hours. We've also updated our purchasing process and piloted our virtual POs. Our virtual PO system came on board last week, and we will install everything for a rollout on June seventh. You can see in your documents there, we have, A, donations to the Board of Education. Anderson High School received considerable amount of donations this month, and we want to call attention to the Mercy Health Monetary Donation, it's eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Turpin also received several donations, and again, there is the Mercy Health Monetary Donation of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we appreciate that partnership with Mercy Hospital, or Mercy Health. Also, Wilson Elementary received thirty-two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollar gift for the synthetic turf on the playing field, so we're very thankful for that donation that came to that Statement of the board accounts is item B. General fund receipts is item C, and you can see there that we had an estimated revenue of seventy-nine million, sixty thousand, and we are tracking at about ninety-four point seven-eight percent. June thirtieth is the end of the fiscal year, so revenues look strong for the district right now. We hope that we will meet those expected numbers. Also, the next page, you will see general fund expenditures. We expected to spend eighty-six million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, and at this particular point in time, we spent sixty-nine million, six-hundred-and-one. That's about eighty-five point two-five percent, and so we are tracking well in that area as well, and you will find that also in the general fund expenditures by object in item E of the board's report. You have the monthly bank statements for April, which are our investments, and they are running, as Rob said the last time, well. The amended appropriations for fiscal year eighteen are there for the Board of Education to review. Board Service Fund is item I, and in item I, there's a requesting approval to pay expenses from the Board Service Fund as listed for Board Members, Choice, and Smith. You see those Board Service Fund adjustments there. Item J is a one million dollar transfer into the Permanent Improvement Fund. It is in the forecast and was originally to be appropriated in the general fund for capital outlay for furniture and IT equipment at the high schools. Item K is a one million, two-hundred thousand dollar advance for the purchase of thirteen school buses. The board approved prior to tonight, which will be returned to the general fund upon the private placement funding. And then item L is to establish a miscellaneous state fund for monies being released today through the Department of Education for secondary transition students with disabilities. How did I do so far?
Quite well, thank you.
What are the questions?
Yeah, let's pepper him with questions.
And I have a, sorry, I lost it here. Get back to my agenda. So treasurer or superintendent recommend action, motion to approve action items nine point one through fourteen point one, less items ten point three and ten point four as presented.
Ten point three was what? Remind me, please.
I think it was the change orders to Anderson High School, building renovations, and ten point four was the resolution for urgent necessity.
I knew what ten four was. All right, do we have a motion for nine point one through fourteen point one, less ten point three and ten point four?
I'll make a motion to approve the conservative actions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Heiss?
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss, yes. Mr. Frum?
Yes. All right, and then item ten point three are the...
It was Travelers.
What's that?
Yeah, it was Travelers. I don't think we actually need to pull that out.
Yeah, I didn't have an issue.
I'm...
Yeah, I didn't have an issue with traverses.
Okay.
Okay. Item 10.3, the change orders for Anderson High School. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.3, change orders to Anderson High School.
Second? Ms. Choice?
I'll second.
Dr. Heiss?
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mrs. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss, yes. Mr. Fruman?
Yes. All right, and then item 10.4 is the resolution of urgent necessity. Can we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of urgent necessity as presented.
Dr. Heiss, would you care to second that?
I'll second.
Dr. Heiss?
Mrs. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss, yes. Ms. Barber?
Abstain.
Mr. Fruman?
All right, and that brings us to item 15.1, Business Advisory Council Report.
The Business Advisory Committee met last week, and we went over several items regarding transportation. We also reviewed the new policies required by the State of Ohio for how the committee is to act and the legislation mandates that are new to the committee, and so they approved new concepts about how the committee will work and the types of work that they will, that they will do. They also talked a bit about the upcoming year in regard to potential new resources that the district may need in regard to the five-year forecast, and talked about the need to start working on branding and messaging regarding the district's value as, and most importantly, the many good things that are going on in the school district relative to construction, performance, and so they're ready to move on with the summer. They have, the next meeting is in about six weeks, and they're going to be prepared to continue with their work to assist the board with financial decision-making.
Thank you. Item 15.2 is the Policy Committee Report. Mr. Smith, who chairs that committee, sent me a message, and he said that this is just the first reading on the one policy change under College Credit Plus, and that, of course, is attached to the agenda. Item 15.3 is the Human Resource Committee. We had a meeting last time, and we reported last time, there hasn't been a meeting since then, so nothing further to report. Item 15.4 is the Finance Committee Report. Mr. Smith tells me there's no report either there or Legislative Liaison. Item 15.5 is the Teaching and Learning Committee Report.
We have not had a meeting.
And then 15.6 is the Safety Committee Report. You discussed some issues early. Was something to add to that, Ms. Barber?
No, John did mention that we've been meeting twice a year, and we might make it three now, especially since we're going to start talking about this prevention stuff.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Item 15.7, I'm certain I saw Ms. Stone out there. Dee? Forest Hills Foundation?
I don't know what happened to the microphone.
That's okay. I'm good. I have four kids, too. I can raise my kids. Anyway, I just, I just got to Forest Hills Monday for education. It's follow-up, we had a meeting last week, Wednesday night. I'm not even sure the date at this point. But just, one of the main things we discussed was doing a board retreat on June 9th at a beautiful location in Williamsburg. That's a Saturday, and it will be part of our board. Whoever could be there from our board, plus additional community members, faculty, we're recruiting a couple of students, because we want them to have influence of students. So basically, we're trying to figure out, where do we want to look like, where do we want to be in 2025? So we're just getting ready for the future. We also spent a good deal of time talking about, Mr. Prebles presented about the District Community Partnership Initiative and how we can support that effort. And just wanted to say thank you to the community and to our sponsors, and everybody who came out for Forest Hills 5K, the hotlers that we could pull. Beautiful weather, we had a great, it was a great day. I mean, it was all, I thought, all around, great support. People seemed to love it. Beth Davis and Jenny Myers did a fabulous job, so we're very grateful for that. We will have our golf outing on Friday, July 20th. It's Friday night this year, it's only nine holes. We're encouraging alumni, community members, parents, students, if they're on, if they know to play golf, they can golf, as long as they're in high school. And our Sorority for Success will be at the Anderson Center this year and on September 29th. And we're looking for sponsors for that now. If anybody in the district, they can contact me. That's it.
Thank you very much, and for everything the foundation does for us. No Legislative Liaison Report. Ms. Laber, I saw you back there. 15.9, the Forest Hills Teachers Association Report.
I'll follow this one, too, as well. I think I have a teacher voice, so I can move that to speed. Thank you for having me tonight. Just a couple of things for the board. First of all, we might kind of have three things. We have some current legislative updates in the states and things up there, and then a couple of local ones. And the first one is, we can give big effort from the association in to send our teachers to the state, which is an opportunity. In this past one, we just had, it was on May 11th, we sent our delegate, Arden Armstrong and myself, who go to Columbus twice a year for that event. This year, something really amazing happened. It was quite, probably inspiring for me as a teacher, should be for anybody that's in public education. We had Dale Lee, who is the president of the West Virginia Teacher Association in the state of West Virginia, come in and do a surprise talk. It was extremely inspiring, because it wasn't just about, as many of us know, West Virginia had a, quite a difficult time with the negotiations, the pay, and different things like that, but it really wasn't his focus. His focus was really more about that he presented the belief that public education is here to serve all kids, all social magnates, all races, all groups of kids, and that we are here as a whole, as a society, to try and do that. And I thought something that he said I want to share with you tonight, was that the role of public education is just not to provide hope, is to give belief. And I thought that was really inspiring, especially this time of year as teachers, as we're winding down the school year, and the kids are kind of getting crazy, we're kind of crazy, and it was a good time, but I really thought that was something that we came out of it on. That's true, that we need to always constantly make sure as educators that we're here to provide hope and the belief that we can achieve, and that's our goal as public educators. We also had an opportunity for the president, which is, I guess, me at this point in time, that I have been nominated to serve on their Higher Educational Standards Board, which will have, we have about 15 people. We had a vacancy open up, and I was contacted by the office just this past week, so I'm going to be admitting my, submitting that and participating in the role of that board. I think we already have, I'm mainly serving on the state board. Mr. Broadheart, where I have that position.
On the state board.
Yes.
Excuse me.
I'm not supposed to be serving. I'm so sorry. The board's collaborative promotes educator quality professionalism in public accounting building on behalf of students and citizens of the higher. So it's not just the voice that's there to promote teachers, but to promote professionalism in quality of public accounting, which I think is something our school, in our school district, shows a high fall of, we're always trying to be physically responsible, but we also are very proud of those kids that are going to be walking here this weekend, right, such as well-rounded education. The last couple of items that I wanted to emphasize, and I think the association here and the district has been very walkable, that's not so much media and leadership required. And I was very happy, Mr. Fruman, to hear that, and Mr. Prebles, the discussion of school safety. And that obviously is on the forefront of every teacher of the day or when you walk into school. It's not something that's taken for granted any day. And so, you know, we've had different times, in different places, with things that are changing in our schools, to adolescent drills, to practicing drills, but the reality basis is, when you're in the classroom with students and that door's shut, you become so, so adamant about making sure kids and what they're doing, and what they're there to do is important, within the safety issue on that. So I noticed as we speak about that, I know Mr. Epper has talked to me about a couple of different things. I just want to make sure that the association, what we have to report, the same, that's a very serious conversation, and what the board does, engaging in that conversation and we're forward with that. As A comes in, there are several things that we've been able to accomplish this year. Probably the biggest one, and it's still, seriously, I've mentioned it a couple of times, is our District Advisor Committee, as well as our Board of Advisors Committees. Ms. Carnahan and I have worked really diligently to get things moving here, but more than that, I think it's trying to get them to talk, and make sure that it's going to take time and energy for those things to process, and for us to work together to make sure that we can get solutions that are well-based for teachers and students in the administration. Any questions?
No, but that was an excellent report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take fall on the two.
So next, we're going to have, we'll have motion for executive session, but before we do that, our next meeting is June 25th, correct?
Correct.
June 25th, 2018, that is scheduled to be back at Nagel. I wouldn't count on that. I would expect we'll end up doing it here, or in the cafetorium, maybe. We'll, we'll talk. Right now, it's scheduled for Nagel. And if nothing else, we don't anticipate taking further action after executive session. Can we have a motion?
Pursuant to Ohio Rise Code, Section 121.22G1, I hereby move the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official. And pursuant to Ohio Rise Code 121.22G2, I hereby move that the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes or sale of property at competitive bidding, since disclosure at this time would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons whose personal, private interests are averse to the general public interest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes. Dr. Heiss, yes. Ms. Choice, yes. Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Thank you, everyone who's still here.
And get out now. There is a big storm that is coming.